All right, we'll go ahead and get started. First of all, we'll start out with the prayer and the pledge. We'll have Jill Lynn Ford give us the prayer and then afterwards, Gump Phillips will lead us in the pledge.
Our Father and Son, we're grateful that we can meet this evening as a community and as friends and are grateful for the opportunities that we have to live in these free countries and for the rain that we've had and ask for more of that to come this winter and snow and rain that we might have and enough water for our needs next year. We're grateful for the opportunities we have to listen to issues and problems and make decisions and please bless us and guide our thoughts as we go through the process that we might be able to make the best decision for our community. We ask a special blessing tonight on the citizens of Paris that they might be comforted and blessed with safety. We're grateful for all the name blessings that we have and we say it's in Jesus Christ, amen.
Please stand or speak the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing on the agenda is the consent agenda. Do we have any discussion or do we have a motion?
I'll move that we approve their consent agenda.
Okay, we got a motion to approve. We got a second.
A second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Okay, next thing on the agenda would be the public forum. If there's anybody in the audience who would like to come forward, please come up to the microphone, state your name. Nobody? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public forum. Next thing on the agenda will be staff reports. Do we have any staff?
Yeah, energy enthusiasts in the house right now.
Yeah, just get it over with. Just a couple of things, Mayor Council. On the park side, we've just been working with the T-Meat on the lights, getting them up and then taking them down and fixing them and getting them up. So it's kind of a, this is our, the first year really doing it, so I think we'll get a better system in place and that'll be good. On the golf end, you know, we got Snow Monday, obviously we had a busy weekend, but the only pressing issue is we want it to melt for the golfers, but also because we haven't put our fungicide on the greens yet, so there could be a big shovel, shovel off of 20 some odd greens if we don't get them cleared, so.
Well, yeah, because it stayed warm.
Yeah.
We've been golfing on it for...
Yeah, well, we, it, it, they say it's 120 days, but those last 60 days aren't that great, so we wait as possibly as long as we can in case we have a long spring. And so, that's where we're at. But on the bright side, we have had it, this is the busiest November we've had ever, and so if we do get open, we'll just keep, keep going. On the season passes, Lori will be interested in this, the season passes ended the 15th, so now, any of our season pass holders, when they play, they pay, play at a discounted price, but now, but now they, they, they pay so for open until, till January. But that's what's going on in our departments. Any questions?
Any questions?
It's good, thanks. It's a lot better now that I'm out of a cast and a sling. I feel kind of like functional. I was a little nuts there for a couple of weeks, thanks.
I do have a question.
Okay.
Not necessarily, maybe you can answer. In the emails we've been going back and forth, I've seen the bids we've got for the pump, the house, the pump house off the well there. What are we building there? That's a lot of money.
Well, I told Travis I'm in the wrong business, that because that's nicer than my house, but I don't know, I, I, I will serve to Travis on this one, because...
Because of the secondary line, you had to enlarge it for him.
Right, right, because of culinary, right? And, and, yeah, and I guess, but I'll turn it over to, to the brains of the operation.
And then the pump sticks, the well sticks out of ground a long ways?
Yeah.
No, part of it is if we weren't trying to water the golf course, the building wouldn't be near that long, but we have to put air gaps and backflow preventers and everything in there that we wouldn't have had to put in if we weren't trying to water this golf course with it, so.
So this cost obviously includes more than the construction of the building.
Yes, it's the piping and everything that goes in.
Because this is a pretty expensive building.
It actually came in good. I know it sounds expensive, but the engineer's estimate actually was over $500,000, so...
Who is the engineer that estimated it?
Uh, not Jones in the middle, but, yeah, it was Jones in the middle. But it actually came in at like 230, so, I know that still sounds like a huge bunch of money, but we were happy to see it was way underneath the estimate, so, I don't know, that's good, but we thought that was good. But while I'm up here, I actually do have some good news finally, at least as of right now. We are at 114% on precipitation for the year and 233% on the snow water equivalent, so that's a first for us in many years, but we have 12 inches of snow up there as of this morning, so hopefully we'll keep getting some of these storms and it can rain down once, but as long as it dawns up there, that'd be awesome, so.
And we didn't have this last year up there, did we? We didn't have this much last year.
No. We got one or two, you know, storms, but not, we weren't like this high yet, so.
I don't even think they opened up the ski resorts until almost Christmas today.
So that was good news, hopefully we'll keep it up, so it'll look brighter when we come to spring. But unless you have any other questions, that's all I got. Okay?
Hey, Council, I was just going to give you a little update. We've, we've been looking at our cell phone provider. We've been with Sprint for many years. We've had some issues with some towers going down and we've been out of service for, one time for three days. Doesn't really sit well with public safety and other things, but we've looked in the past and changing to Verizon, they've got a little more reliable network, but they've always been more expensive, but we got a bid from them this week and it's actually a little cheaper than the Sprint, so more than likely we're going to be changing our phone system from Sprint to Verizon. Just to let you know that, that would probably happen the first week in December. We're going to meet with them next week to find out a time, so you'd get some phones changed out and we'd be on that.
So we change the phone right out and then put a new phone in?
We keep our same numbers, but they would give a phone that's compatible with the Verizon network and...
So we can't use the same phone? Do we have to pay for the new phones again?
No, we get a credit. They, they, we pay for them initially and then they'll pay it back. So it looks like from the bid, everything looks really good and it seems like most people are happy. I know we're pleased to have been pushing for this for a long time to get to the Verizon.
Well, that's better. Well, that's better. Is the timing such that we're not going to be hit with a lot of cancellation fees or anything like that?
I don't think there's going to be any, our, our monthly bill, cycle. The next one ends on December 4th, so we're trying to do it so, so it coincides with, with that.
I think Steve tries to take the older phones when he trains them out, meaning he works the numbers that way, so we don't have a whole bunch of them coming up on time.
So anyway, there's some good advantages, just wanted to let you know that more than likely it will happen. We're still trying to get some answers on a couple of questions to make sure we're full good, but it looks like a positive thing. Now, the first part was slowed down a little bit the last two weeks from a record month in October, so we've only had about 450 calls in the last two weeks with 53 arrests, 94 offenses, 117 citations, resulted in 166 violations. One DUI and 11 traffic accidents, so a little bit slower the last couple of weeks than it has been the rest of the year. Just a few things, our Officer of the Year this year was Jay Erst, who was our School Resource Officer, and our Officer of the Quarter, this last quarter was Glenn Carlson. Couple of things we have coming up, December 12th is Shop with the Cop. If anybody has any families that we could assist with that, that you know, please let me know. Or if you have anybody that's willing to donate or is interested in donating, please let me know that also. Both ways. Also with Thanksgiving coming up, we're looking for families to help also that need some help during these times, so if you know of any, please let me know.
Did you get with Kim on that?
With Kim?
Yeah.
With probably separate being, I believe she was there.
Glenn was saying she might have, she might have some things. What did you buy?
Yeah, I finished out with some of my family's.
Yeah, yeah, it might be.
All right, the student council, do you have any couple?
I, I got the email, are you talking about the baskets, the Thanksgiving baskets?
He's got, he's doing Shop with the Cop.
Shop with the Cop.
Yeah, that's an extra.
Yeah, my student council would love to help me with that.
But especially where you're dealing with kids, I was thinking the Shop with the Cop is more good.
Yeah, okay, with you. Couple of things going on, basketball beginning to start December 1st, just so you know, the high school, so we'll be, none of those. We got with Kent, we're putting some parking signs down by the temple that asked the temple patrons to please use the parking lot. Most of those are up now, so Kent is down. Also, in September, we had a resident from the Maples wanting some ATV signs on the trails there by the Maples. I gave him a house to mark and he'll get those up in the next few days, so. Other than that, we have three officers in crisis intervention training that goes along with suicide and mental health prevention, so that'll leave six officers left in the tournament that sends through the mental health course, so hopefully we get that done by the end of the year. We'll all be certified mental health screeners basically, will kind of help out with our mental health population we have here in town, so.
I read an interesting article about that and I think it might have been, I can't remember, or maybe it was either I saw it on, saw it on something, but anyway, talking about some of the different communities around, because we, you have to deal so much with the mental health issues and that it kind of is too bad when it ends up that it has to be done criminally.
Right.
You know, like, like my neighbor, you know? That, that's sad, that, but, but that's kind of the way the laws are. Anyway, there was some different programs going on, not very many, but there's a few pilot programs, I guess, out there that are dealing with, it's through the police force, but they're dealing with the mental health issues differently, you know, not on the criminal side, but on the more preventative, I don't know, I just thought that was interesting, maybe you might want to...
Yeah, some of our healthcare providers are ramping up to, she's accommodated a few more, but we still run into the situation frequently that they don't have insurance, so basically we, we end up having them on custody for 10, 15, or 20 hours trying to get somewhere that will accept them.
Yeah.
If they have insurance, you know, like the rest of the world, if you're willing to pay, people are going to take you. So we're trying to battle through that right now, but, you know, unless, unless someone with the dollar steps up, I think it's still going to be that, that issue that we'll deal with for the future anymore, so, there you go.
I know the stoplight on 14th and South and the highway's been approved yet, time on that?
I believe they said late next summer.
Late next, yeah.
Well, they, they, they approved it, but it has to go through the budgetary process. When they get to July, I guess it'll be their budget and then after that, I would assume. So, we're grateful for that life though, that's going to be nice.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Council, just giving a couple of dates. We're preparing for our meeting, we have been preparing for our meeting tomorrow, so that's the date we have to go through all the information that we've gathered. One area is basically our pump testing on our engines, we do yearly and bubbles, ask OK, we don't have any issues, other than one engine has a problem with the hydraulic pump area, or the pumping pump that they're repairing, but we did have a list of deficiencies in our area throughout the city, flows, that we were not meeting the fire flow demands of certain buildings in the city. As we went back out and tested and checked those areas, there's only one area in the city that we don't meet the flows and we never will meet the flows, just because of the demand of the fire flow of the building, the high school. And the flows are better than what had been in the past, but we don't have the pressures and volume in that area for the size of the buildings. So, because it's not sprinkler, they counterflow 100% flow of that building. For example, like junior high, it's not quite as big as high school, but because it has fire sprinklers, they reduce it down by 75% on the fire flow, so we don't have any issues in that area, that area until the school has fire sprinklers, it's just completely closed.
So what are we up to here?
They, they just got to put a fire sprinkling system in just because of the size of the building. So right now, the high school takes about 5,000 gallons per minute for fire suppression and we maybe a half that in that area. The other portion is because we're so close to the tanks, we're on the upper end of the upper system, so we still have the pressures. Be on the lower part of the upper system, then the pressures increase quite a bit. Now, for example, down by Line J, we are in 110, 120 pressures where our high school were 65, 70, and then once you start flowing, then it drops down. So, that's just when our, the flows are good for the residential, it's just that size of a building, we just, we can't meet the flows just because of solar, and so that's just when we'll, we'll have load deficiency there. For the rest of them, we're good, so.
So, any other staff? Well, the student council report. How many of the student council we got this?
We just have one today, sorry. Do we want them to attend every meeting?
Well, I told them they need to get all the 10 last.
Maybe you can tell me and McKenna, we can get the word out very well. Maybe we're doing chemistry and biology and English.
Yeah, maybe that's what it is.
Some of the staff. But we had our first meeting last time, so that's probably why we're not very coordinated yet, but we just started, we haven't had a program for quite a while now. I don't really know what else we're supposed to talk about. We had, me and McKenna, the mayor, the city council, had a meeting last week with Mr. Moore and it was just about the county and the cities working together. And any other questions?
What did you learn over there, anything?
He always liked arguing a lot.
Maybe we should let him do all the talking.
Funny how we do argue over there a lot, but that's our cog in our mag mean, our MBL.
That's your outlet, it's therapy.
Yeah, it's therapy, so, yeah, being a bunch of mayors, we're all out to get our own things, so as you can probably tell, we like to all protect our turf. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, Scott?
This one, just to all involved, fix turf on our way, road, whatever it is, it's a lot better thanks to the road and water department, whatever, makes a big difference. Thank you.
Karen?
Utah Lake Commission is holding their meeting tomorrow morning at 7:30 at the county building. Anyone would be, wanting to be there. I don't have any other thing except I, I'm driving north on Main Street almost every morning, quite early, long before the sun comes up. I don't know who it is, I'm not trying to point fingers, but there is a trailer there with a snowmobile that's been parked on the east side of North Bay for a long time. It's in a dangerous, dangerous position.
East side of North Bay?
Yeah.
About 450.
Yeah, that's about what's up.
Okay, so I'm on.
Scott's still here. Yeah, I just, we had the funnest thing, I think it was last week, was it last week we brought the band in? Yeah, so Pace and Band won state championship, so they were so excited. We had two fireworks full, right, Scott?
Yes.
I mean, those kids were so excited, they were cracking stuff. And not only that, but there were some leftover fireworks, is that what, there was leftover or?
Fireworks vendor.
Oh, fireworks vendor has, gave some. Anyway, so I had a little fireworks show right there for them. Anyway, thank you, and would you please tell all the drivers and everybody who, who helped with that, thank you, that was so fun. The kids had a great time, it was a kind of unusual event to have your band, you know, come in and went, it was just fun, so, good.
Yeah, mine?
I want to thank you for the fireworks display as well, the, my grandkids really enjoyed it. We were standing at the right place at the right time.
It's fun, huh? I mean, it was pretty good.
That's all I have here.
Okay.
Larry? I was just dozing off for a nice simple nap and firing on the fireworks.
Right, right, yeah.
Right in my back, yeah.
You should have turned them over.
Condolences. All right, and Tyler, that's mine, so I, he called this guy and go from there, so. Next thing on the agenda will be the scout attendance, and it doesn't look like we have any scouts tonight, so, pass that. And then proclamation for the cowboy poetry. Dave?
Mayor Council, the Cowboy Poetry Association's asking if the city would, again, the plan January 3rd through the 9th is Cowboy Poetry Week, they are going to have a program here, I believe this year they're going to do it down at the veterans' facility, but, but they, help the council support and so that's really proclamation from you.
Okay, do we have any discussion or motion?
I move, Mayor, that we direct the mayor to sign resolution number...
It's just a proclamation. Proclamation had a number on it.
The proclamation had, since they didn't have a poetry week.
Okay, we have a motion, you have a second? I'll second. Motion to say any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Next thing is amendment to the interlocal strengthening families agreement. Turn that over to Kim.
Okay, last year we applied for a grant from the county for $15,000 and we got it, and the grant was for one training session to train my facilitators, which was pretty expensive, and then one session of strengthening families. And when all is said and done, I had $5,000 left over from that, and so I had enough money to do another session of strengthening families, because the training ended up not being as expensive as I originally had thought. So what this amendment is, is just to take that $5,000 and kind of re-categorize it so that I can pay my facilitators and the food for another session of strengthening families. And then, also I wanted to let you know, I just finished another grant, as you guys are welcome to look at, for the county for another $15,000 to do another, two sessions of strengthening families, and it's a parenting program, it's evidence-based, and we pulled from families in our community, and they attend this, and it is a 12-week program and involves the whole family, and it's been really, really positive. Anyway, that's really all the amendment is, is just to kind of move that money so that we didn't lose that $5,000 so that I could actually do another session, and so I just needed to have more money in my facilitators and my food, that's it.
Okay, do we have any discussion and motion?
I'll make a motion to amend the budget.
Is that a budget amendment or what is that?
There's a resolution. If you want to adopt the resolution, it's just authorizing the amendment to the strengthening of families agreement that already exists between the county and Pace City for the, for an additional class and training for facilitators and...
That's your motion? That's your motion? Did you get that, Trista? Okay, we got a second by Scott? Any other discussion? Just roll call.
It's money.
Do we have to roll call it?
Actually, the money's already here and it's already allocated, it's just, the county requires, it sits on putting on another class, they...
I guess what we need to know, do we need to roll call it or just, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those, okay, motion passed.
Hey, sir, at the U City Council, we're just sort of beginning, so we're not perfect yet, but if you want them at every meeting, we'll be here. I was...
Well, I was just going to have them come out and just see what they learned in the last few weeks.
I totally forgot about that. So, sorry about that.
No, they're fine, they, they come back and we'll give them one more and then, then we'll just have McKenna pup days every week.
Okay, you want her at every meeting? Okay, perfect, we'll do that.
But now, let's think, let's think through this a little bit though, because we want these kids to keep doing this.
Do I have to tell you, my, my daughter came, is on the U City Council, and she came to your meeting and really I thought maybe she would perform and say she was really bored.
Bored, stiff, yeah.
Yes, but she didn't, she actually really enjoyed it. She thought it was really fun. Go figure, but she liked it, so, you know.
I think they had a lot more fun.
Yeah, whatever you guys wanted to do, I really think they'll, they'll do it. They're taking it pretty seriously. They came with me to the Maple School District Parent Awareness Night, a couple of them and sat at the table and helped me organize all the information, and so they do want to be involved in the community, so whatever direction you guys want to give me, I'm ready to take it.
Well, I thought that they would turn sour when I took them to my cog in the MBL meeting, but he was all, he talked over that.
Why don't we just ask them at least once a month, maybe the first?
Yeah, maybe the first. Well, I think Dana Manukin sent her son to lots of notes and, so I think they enjoyed it.
I think they, I think they enjoyed it.
We could have, have that part of the reporting part of the, of the agenda, I think, and we just ask them to be, have that on the agenda as a recording.
Tyler, I just told them to stand up there in the council, staff and council.
In the staff, okay, we could do that.
I mean, there's no sense doing the whole, if they're not here, then we're not really, you know what I mean?
Okay.
And they're kind of hard as staff, I think.
Yeah.
To the council. So, and if we just have her, McKenna or Tyler or whatever, one of them, maybe once a month or whatever, they can just report on what they're doing and, and stuff like that. If some go to meetings, like if Kim was to take them to the Sumo and dazzle them with his, you know, whatever, when he's up there, they can come and tell us all about it, and that takes 20 minutes off of Kim's work, so, okay?
Hopefully you email me with any suggestions.
Okay, thanks. All right, next thing on the agenda is the discussion regarding the Everbridge communication. Dave?
Mayor Council, we currently for the last few years, we've been using the Parton Communication to send out the information to the citizens, email checks, phone messages, we use it for shut-off, we use it for quite a few things. The mayor, Scott Spencer, they've been working with the county, this new communication Everbridge, and they, they're trying to implement it county-wide. Our contract was part of, it goes until June of, of this next year. I did send a letter requesting that they terminate the contract and refund some of our money. They don't have any obligation to do that, I don't think I'm going to get a response back, but we feel like it's important to enter into this mass notification protocol with Utah County. It's going to be cheaper in the long run, plus a better program for all of the Utah County residents. And so what we're asking is that the council approve this mass notification interoperation agreement with Utah County, and you, if you look at it, you've seen all the other cities of, of the county, I think many of them have entered into the agreement already, and we'll ramp it up. I, I don't think it's a bad thing to overlap at this point, because sometimes if we have, before this gets up and running, we can still use Parton, we have used that, and, and this, the Parton contract, it was $10,000 a year annually for it, this one's going to be four, so it'll be a pretty good savings, and hopefully with all the EMS and the, and the public safety, then it'll be a better program for all of them.
Does this mean the citizens will be getting county-wide notifications in addition to the city notifications or is this...
Well, Scott, you may want to come and just clarify, but we can still do the city notifications, but there's a program where citizens around the county can sign up for things they want to be notified for, and say if you lived here, but you worked in Pleasant Grove, you could sign up for notifications with their schools or some work things, and if you have any interest in notification of anything in the county, you have an ability to sign up, and then if there's a message county-wide, you'll go after those that are signed up, so.
And if there's a mass, like an earthquake or something like that, then it goes out county-wide and...
So we still, we still have the ability to push all the messages out to everybody, because we'll still pull data from the school district and from our cell program, but what this also does, it has an opt-in feature, the residents, it'll go out starting December 1st, that you can sign up, and we'll... that you can sign up, and we'll, we'll have things in our city they can go in and check, like I want to hear things from Public Works, or for Onion Days and Salmon Supper, different things, so they can select those things they want to hear about. So as we push things out about Onion Days or Salmon Supper, people will just get those messages and ask for them, and the ones that didn't want it won't receive those. But in case of emergency, we'll have the ability to push it out to everybody. But with this opt-in feature, people are entering their information as well, and so if you work in Provo City, you'll opt-in for Pace City for whatever you want, and enter all your information, and it'll, it'll geo-base on your address, so it'll know where you're at. But then if you work, for example, in Provo, you can opt-in on Provo stuff, so if something happens in Provo, you'll get notified from Provo stuff, as well as Pace Cities. So if you live in California, you like kind of the salmon supper, you can opt-in on the salmon supper portion of our information, and then when we send stuff out, like for salmon supper, it'll push it out to most people.
Oh, so very, wow.
Yeah, so we can do whatever list, so you can, you can go through and opt-in on all the different cities and their features that you'd like.
So is this a website?
It's, it's, it's web-based. So the address that they'll push out, uh, that starts December 1st is alerts.utaccounty.gov. And then it's the same address for every resident in Utah County, so every city doesn't have a different size. We're doing it as one county group pushing in, so all the residents sign up.
Say that again, alert.utac.
And so December 1st, they'll open that up for people to get online and start signing up and entering that information in. So if you have, uh, you know, five people living in your home, the best thing is for every person to sign up, because we want different alerts for whether they want to sign up or they can. You know, because they'll look at not only email addresses for work and home and cell, um, they'll have the home phone numbers, all that stuff. So there'll be a lot of different ways you can enter, pay in, to receive information, so. So it'll be a good program, a lot more flexibility. It, it is based more for public safety, but it works for everybody. And then as well, we have, on the backside, we have the ability to set it up for our customers, but also we can set it up for employees, so everyone can send stuff to our Public Works, or wherever, we can send just a text out or email, that way as well, so it works for us as employee-based groups. Yeah, and they are, they do have one mobile app, you can do some of the information like you do with Parlan, but right now, from what I understand, they don't have the feature that you would enter for, like we do right now with those pop-up stuff. You can send information in, but it's not similar to what Parlan's at, is, but they're, we're working on upgrading that. This is, is a, uh, a company that's based worldwide, so they have the ability to use the information as far as sharing phone lines and stuff all over the United States, so it's even more secure and better for us, and more than half the price we cost.
That's even better.
Yeah.
So we hope to get a mobile app from them, it, it, right now they don't have a Parlan app, but we've asked them to work on that, so hopefully we can roll something out of that in the future.
Ken? So, we need a motion.
Yeah, we're asking if they don't have.
What's that?
What's the item they don't have?
Well, I'm not sure, I haven't seen the mobile app that, like, like he said on Parlan. In fact, we, we put a blitz out on that, we had about eight hundred people sign up for that, and then somebody can see a pop-up, they take a picture, and it comes to us. I, I would like that in this thing, but they haven't developed that yet, they said they would work on that, if that does, so that would be very helpful for us.
But as far as, you know, waters out, that's a...
Yeah, we can still, and we can still pick a certain area, and like within two hundred, three hundred feet of that area, and, and send a message out to them, and I think it does everything that Parlan does, that mobile app is not quite there yet.
Ken, do we have a motion?
I'll make one.
Go ahead.
I'll second that.
I'll make a motion, but we're looking for that resolution number, number's going to be approving the mass notification interlocal.
She put up the number in.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Have you got that, Trista? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay, next thing on the agenda, we have a motion to go into public hearing.
So who?
You got a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are now in a public hearing, and I will turn it over to Jill on the proposed amendments. It's on line team, and twenty.
Mayor and City Council, we don't have a lot of amendments tonight, but one in particular does warrant some discussion, and so I wanted to provide some information to you to initiate that discussion and, and to determine the best way to approach the amendments to the ordinance. So as the mayor mentioned, we are looking at amendments to Title 19 zoning ordinance and Title 20 subdivision ordinance. And the zoning ordinance, uh, we're looking at various, modifying various sections in Chapter 9, 2.8, which is the commercial and industrial development section of the ordinance. And it's specific to parcel improvement regulations for existing properties. And so for those properties that have existing buildings. And then secondly, we're also looking at removing the density calculation for retirement centers in residential zones. Believe last year we changed our zoning ordinance to, to make sure that our regulations in relation to residential facilities for the disabled would be consistent with state code and federal law, and we missed one section, and so we are requesting to remove those density calculations in the section over there. And then as far as Title 20 subdivision ordinance, we are looking at making modifications to the ingress and egress requirements for developments that are adjacent to limited access for collectors and our general established streets, giving them the ability to have more than ten units on one point of ingress, any press, staff is proposing fifteen. So going back up to the first one, parcel improvement regulations for existing properties. Currently, the way that the ordinance is, is worded is that if a new business goes into an existing building, or if the building, if a building permit is issued for improvement of the site, or if a new business license or a new business is going in onto the property, and there are non-compliant issues on the site, whether it's storm drainage, parking, curvier and sidewalk, there's a variety in the site plan ordinance, it triggers those improvements being completed. Staff has struggled with this regulation probably over the last year, and more recently we've had a few other applicants or property owners come in and have been concerned with these regulations. It really varies site by site, in some cases, it's just a matter of storm drainage, in other cases, it's the whole gamut. You know, it's curvier or sidewalk, it's parking, it's storm drainage, it's landscaping, it's everything.
There's storm drainage sometimes, like my neighbor, that's a major deal, because he's got to redo his whole parking lot.
And so I do have a picture of that woodmaker, and so we'll, we'll show that, but... So we've got a couple of applicants now, or at least, you know, some businesses that are, that are wanting to operate in certain locations, but as the ordinance is written, they would have to complete those improvements to the site. So we've been discussing this over the last few months. There was some suggestion that we contact other communities to see how our ordinances are in line with, you know, Santaquin and Salem and Spanish Fork, Springville, to see if, if they're consistent, you know, if they're more restrictive, if there's a way that we can create some, some sort of balance with, you know, what the community's wanting to see as far as improving property and community image versus allowing landowners or tenants of the site to operate a business in that location. And so there, we did look at that, we, we did notice that just comparing regulations based cities is the most strict. And so the proposal that is before you tonight is a hybrid of Santaquin, Spanish Fork, and Springville. And so those are the regulations before you, but just as, as a couple of examples, some of the challenges that we've had recently. Ron's Tires added onto his building, has three more bays on the site, which triggered a building permit, and it would suggest, because he does not have any storm drainage on site, that he has put storm drainage in there. Going back to the mayor's comment, you know, it may require some, you know, tearing up the asphalt, re-rating, installation of sumps, or, you know, some sort of catch basin, or, you know, some sort of containment area to address the storm drainage, so it's not going out into the roads and just creating a problem downstream.
But it's pretty much kind of...
Draining on someone else's property.
Draining on somebody else's property, exactly. So with, with Ron's, we were able to come to a solution. It did take longer than everyone involved would have liked, but we do feel like we found a solution in order to address those issues and allow him to move forward with his addition. Liberty Safe, granted, you know, the scale of their, of their project is quite larger than, you know, what you see typically in commercial industrial areas, but they have an additional one hundred thousand square feet, which triggered the installation of, they didn't have curvier sidewalk, anything along the frontage of their site, so about, I think it was about twelve hundred feet on the frontage of their site, triggered curvier and sidewalk, and we're working with them. There was some participation from the city, you know, as far as the storm drainage, because some of it is part of our system. And so working together with them, they were eager to get those improvements in, and for those of you that are by, it's a great, it's a great project. And, and, you know, we'd like to see that continue along Utah Avenue as well. Some other examples, Carter's Glass, that, that's the most recent one that was brought to our attention. But you've got, there's, so you've got Interstate 15 here, Utah have it in here, most of you know where Carter's Glass, where that building is. But, you know, they do not have curvier and sidewalk, they don't have a parking lot, there's no landscaping, there isn't storm drainage, and so that's the most recent concern of, you know, him being able to rent out or to sell for a business, or even lease out the building for a business, because as written, those improvements will need to be completed. Some of the other successes that we've had, whether or not there's been support of it, or, you know, there's been concern, Elmer Kido, when they converted this building, they put storm drainage in, they put parking in, they put landscaping, you know, they meant the reinforcement to, to a T, and once again, it was a great improvement to a very visible area of our community across the street. So there's three examples here, that's why we've got, you've got, uh, Intermodal Motors. They did some resurfacing of their site, uh, there's some storm drainage that was put in in order to accommodate that, that business. And then over here with Wright Chiropractic on that, of course, you didn't have enough parking. Yes, the parking does back into the right-of-way, because there are some limitations of the size of parcel, but they were required to put some additional facilities in ADA and the parking in order to accommodate that business there. Mount Evil Law is, is another one that we've been discussing recently, and I know that the owner is here and they want to address this issue, but there's been some challenge with the parking for this location, because it would suggest that the site would need to be brought into compliance. The, the issue with this one is the current, the current parking is in the unapproved city right-of-way. And so how, you know, are we working with the applicant in order to complete those improvements on-site, so at some point in the future we can complete? You know, it's all the curvier and sidewalk here.
You got that one right next door that you made him put in all the storm drainage and...
But it was a house, and they converted it to commercial?
Oh, yes, yeah, that situation, and we've talked with the owners in the area too about that, you know, of comparing the two. This was a residential home that was converted into a commercial business, and so that did trigger some additional requirements, just a little bit.
Was it a law office, he used to be at home?
Well, this used to be a home, and then they converted it into an salon. And so it was a whole conversion from a residential use to a commercial use. With this site, it was an office that turned into an office. One was a real estate agent, and now you have attorneys there. And so it was just, it was a continuation of the same use, where Royal Nails was a conversion from residential to commercial. The other one is the Blind Man Building, or what used to be BJ Plumbing, this one that the mayor had referred to. We've had multiple people look at this site and look at that building for a variety of uses. The most recent is a reception center. But with that, you know, recognizing that there isn't sidewalk along SR 198, recognizing that the parking lot is in very poor condition, and there isn't any storm drainage facilities on the site, so there is stormwater trespass onto adjoining properties, of course, that's the...
I came to my building.
So as the ordinance, so the ordinance is worded, we would require them to, to take care of those issues before a new business goes in that building. Another one is Olson's Garden Shop, you know, we did have a request from Brad Olson, he wanted to build some additional buildings on the site, which, you know, a lot of these other persons were looking at, is they have limited frontage on the street. If you look at this one in particular, it's on a corner lot, with a lot of frontage on both of those streets. And so Brad, and I know that he has addressed the council on this issue before, is that would require him to do all the road improvements along the truck route, and then for this entire distance of one hundred north. Looking at him for expanding a few buildings in relation to the cost of those improvements, you know, he was concerned with that regulation. He has chosen not to move forward with his improvements just because of that regulation. And then Jolly Joe's is another one that we, so that's on Main Street and 100 South, so it's the old automobile repair building there in historic downtown. That's another one that has been brought up recently, of, it's, has, I'm, I'm not sure if the sale has gone through, but there's somebody that actually wants to purchase that and put a detailing business in that, which would also trigger taking care of parking, storm drainage, you know, taking care of some of the other non-compliant issues on the site.
You know, at least we got their silver face.
So, so we have those, we can refer back to those, I can get a Google Earth if you want, and we can look at some things, but those are just some of the recent ones and some of the challenges that staff has encountered probably over the last six months.
If, if this ordinance goes through, then people like me just have to hire an attorney to see about getting it done, instead of the city, we have no leverage.
So as it's written, as it's written, we have that there... We haven't completely eliminated the regulation for improvement of site, but we have provided additional flexibility. So it would be either if they add on to the building more than twenty percent, or a series of additions equaling twenty percent, or if there's a change of use or intensity of the use on the site. You know, those are some of the triggers that we would do. So there would be, in certain cases...
Well, if he didn't do anything to the building, he wouldn't have to do...
Exactly, so I appreciate that clarification, because that's... You know, in the case of Ron's Tires, where he did an addition over twenty percent, it, it still would have triggered. But if somebody was coming in and they were not modifying the building or changing the use, then that is correct. They would be able to get a business license and operate a business in that location and not meet that standard, and trigger those requirements.
But aren't you asking on a case-by-case basis, because every partial's different? Mark?
Begin to treat people across the board equally, is...
Yeah, but if one doesn't have storm drainage, one doesn't have third-gather, one doesn't... And another partial's different, what I'm saying, case-by-case basis, depending on what it needs?
Well, as, as described, the case-by-case is how much development are they doing? Some of the twenty percent, then it doesn't trigger it. But one of the questions earlier was, are we giving up our, or just municipality of bringing these things up to speed? And I think the one...
I don't see, if you take it out, I don't see half of them even being addressed.
And, and now those...
And all it does is just bring you lawyers back into it, and we put, pay you more money, lawyers. Sorry.
Those are the considerations that, that, that come to bear. But a case-by-case can end up being somewhat arbitrary, appreciable. Those are the, the terms that cause things to fail for, for our application of rules in a, in a fair and just manner. If, if it turns out where the, we're just doing things as we, we choose to do and not really following any ordinances or, or being consistent, we open ourselves up. The more willy-nilly we are, the more we are opening ourselves up to litigation.
And again, mayor, it is a public hearing, and I know that there are at least two, two property owners that are here that would like to address the city council.
If you'd like to speak, come up to the microphone, you've got five minutes, and, or, three minutes, I'm sorry. And state your name, and...
And state your name and, okay, whatever.
Uh, Jeff Carter, Carter's Glass. Um, I'll just tell you my reality of, of how this affects me. I've listed this property for probably ten months. Took me nine months to get a renter, and then five minutes to lose him. So, uh, I have no way to make improvements, because I'm not making any money on this property. Um, as far as things go, I, I probably have two or three potential either buyers or renters. Uh, the most recent one made a verbal offer, and then when they found this, about this ordinance, then that dropped by about fifty thousand dollars. So, uh, I obviously don't have the money to keep the business open there, and I don't have the money to, to make improvements in order to, I mean, I, I would be looking at three years' worth of rent just to start looking at asphalt. So, uh, the reality of it is, you know, it's gonna remain, I don't even know if I can reopen my business, because I've let my business license expire there. So I, I have property I can't use unless the ordinance changes. Um, I probably can't even reopen my door as Carter's Glass now, yeah, which is really kind of, uh, you know, it's kind of disappointing and, and kind of, uh, kind of blindsides me, because I had no idea that this even existed. Um, as far as storm drain goes, I think everything in that area probably drains into my property from the road, from my neighbors, from probably even from the railroad, which is right on the border. Um, and the renter that was going in there, you know, we're not making any, we're not making any change to the building, so hopefully I would qualify for something there. But, um, my situation is that will probably sit there for another ten years to be a weed patch, you know, another building. Um, so as far as improvements go to the community, it's gonna have to just sit there. Um, I own the property outright, I don't owe any money on it, but I have commercial loans that I'm still trying to pay off for the last ten years. And just, I have no hope of doing anything with that property. That's my retirement, and I, I can't do anything with it now, apparently. So that's a big frustration for me, that's the reality of what this does. As far as arbitrary and as far as punitive, uh, it puts me out of business as far as a, as a, as a landowner's concern on that property, so. Uh, curb and gutter and sidewalk would go, you know, a hundred feet in end, because there's nothing on either side of me, and so I don't see the point.
But who's, I guess my question is, whose responsibility is it to put in the curb and gutter at least?
Well, it wasn't required when I went in there.
Well, in my understanding, laws change a little bit.
Correct, and in Springfield, in Springfield, in my residence, I, I, I'm on a corner and I did curb and gutter, but they spread it out over ten years. I didn't have to immediately do it in order to keep going as a property.
I don't think that that's out of the question, I, I think that's what we're trying to solve here.
So I'm just kind of trying to give you a face to what everyone on that list is looking at.
Yeah, I have a question. With, if he was to gravel that parking lot so he didn't.
It is gravelled.
Well, if he was to gravel that parking lot so he didn't track dirt or EPA or can this.
Swip.
Swip. Would that suffice, not having the asphalt something like that?
We require a hard surface on our ordinance, so no.
So, I mean, it went on the swip end, but not, not on our own.
On the basis of the ordinance.
So thirty, fifty grand in lumped is, is what I'm hearing, is pretty much pay it or you're, or, you know, it's empty.
Yeah, I think we have a big problem here, Scott. We've got properties that can't be improved, uh, where, and even blighted areas of the town, because the landowners can't take.
We've gotta, we've gotta have some solution that's not gonna require them to come up and.
But then it's like on mine, it affects me, and then I would have to come up with twenty or thirty thousand to pay mine. To get the guy to, to fix a parking lot in Woody.
But the problem is, is government forces big rules, it's no different than my place. If I'd have paid for the permits, I, which I shit on, but when swip thing comes in, then you enlarge your storm drain pond, you gotta have this, you gotta have that. That's just the cost of doing business sometimes. Unless you move your business to what Mr. Carter's was back when this town was only four thousand people. As, as progress comes, you know, like I said, I put in thousands of feet of curb, gutter and sidewalk when we supposedly were gonna do this in two thousand and one, at our expense.
Well, I think it's telling that, that we have a reputation for being difficult to deal with, yet other cities around us have more terrible ordinance.
But I think the way to solve it is, is spread it out over time, it's still gotta happen. You just need to work with them and spread it out over time.
And I'm not opposed to that, but I think we need to do something, we have to change what we have right now.
I mean, you look at some of the blighted areas, but, I mean, I look at Woody and he just.
If you don't wanna fix it up.
He don't wanna sell his for what?
You're only gonna get what it's worth, it's worth what it is. If you fix it up and make it look nice, it's worth more money.
Your economy won't support that.
Based on?
Based on twenty years in business, there's not an economy there to support what I was doing. And in my experience, and I was two years the president of the Chamber of Commerce here, um, the city does have a reputation of being the hardest place to start a business. And I remember when we, when we did, uh, Meet the Candidates Night, there was a candidate for city council who said, "We are the hardest place in Utah County to build a business and we're proud of it." And I was sorry that I had sponsored that Meet the Candidates Night, because it was a knife in my back as, as trying to promote business up. Two months ago, I spent an hour and a half on social media defending the city that you're not trying to keep In-N-Out Burger out. And the lady wanted to come down here with a flaming arrow and shoot it right into the mayor's wall. And so now I'm wondering, maybe I'm on the wrong side of that argument, you know?
In-N-Out's never been here.
I know, that's what I told her. She, but public perception is that you're keeping In-N-Out Burger out in Golden Corral, and if you get on that site and say, "What would you like to see in Payson?" You'll see, uh, a three-hour conversation about how Payson City is keeping businesses out of town. And I know that's not right.
Because Spanish Fork doesn't have any of them either, do they?
Spanish Fork has, Spanish Fork has an intersection called I fifteen and Highway six. And I was the president of that Chamber of Commerce too, and that's really all they have going for. So, uh, anyway, I've said two nights.
No, I wanna work with you, we wanna make this work, but it's gotta be a, it's gotta be a win-win for both.
Well, I, I'd love to improve that property, and I spent seventeen years trying to do it. And there's not an economy that helped me do it. Uh, people get in their car and they drive to Home Depot, and that's the end of the story.
Well, and I think that's, that's how it is with a lot of businesses here, I mean.
Well, I made sure, when Walmart come here, it's good for Payson City for a tax benefit.
And I came down here when I was the president of the Chamber of Commerce, and I explained to all of the people in this room that having Walmart was a good thing, and that you can coexist with Walmart. So, you know, I come over to Payson once a week and have a burger or whatever it is, and I try and support Juan Paul's stores around here, but it is, it's not easy. And if you have to fight the city, then it's even that much harder.
And I, I agree with you a hundred percent. And I'm, I agree with everything you say. But then on the other hand, you gotta look at my end of the deal. It's almost like two bins and two deals, and we're trying to fight to the inside.
Well, Payson's.
If we take it away, then I'm hooked, on the hook for all of that.
Yeah.
And if we don't, then you're on the hook for it. Uh, Payson City sits in the middle and just kinda plays the game, I guess you could say. And I guess, you know, what's my, what's my recourse? If, if it goes through, like I say, it just goes back to the damn lawyers, and, and that's where all the money goes. Nobody wins but the lawyers. They sit back, smile and say, "There we go, I got me another three hundred thousand dollars, and I'm gonna take them," everybody has.
Yeah, you won't see me still, yeah.
That's a terrible thing to say, but.
Mark, can I ask a question of you?
Sure.
Your comment earlier that, that we can't just piecemeal it, we have, that we have to have standards that we have to abide by, but we, uh, we give variances on residential properties and things like that. Are we, can we not have a standard and be allowed to give variances on individual properties? Variances are dictated by state law, and they are, um, there are certain criteria that have to be met, and it's rare that variances are, are branded, um, because of how strict state law is as it relates to that. Can you, can you address, um, the, the issue that we have as cities is to implement these unfunded mandates, sewer drains and, and all these different types of services that we end up providing to the community? And then if we take a look at not, uh, when the time comes, not asking for curb and gutter to be put in, when that is what our storm drain, uh, system is, then we, we come back and, and run the risk of having, being in trouble with the federal government of not coming up to compliance.
Even to the extent that, that that curb and gutter might be an island unto itself with hundreds of yards on either side where there isn't, we don't have an option of making a variance there?
We, not a variance, but we, we have taken that into consideration just recently, where that we have, um, allowed for deferral. The obligation still exists, but we've allowed deferral until there is an accumulation of property side by side that it would be effective for that storm drain, um, to, to move through that, that area.
Well, and I hate to keep beating a dead horse there, but when we built our shop, one of the requirements was we had to take everything out to the front. Then the next door, Charlie Zeman comes in and builds that building, and all of his drains right into my back. Scott's been down there, I get two and three inches of water in the back of that shop. Well, it's full of mats right now with the gym. So I guess we'll wait and see if another big storm comes in, and that all fills up, ruins all their mats, or mats. So that's what I'm saying, he should have been held to the same standard as I was back when they were built, which they weren't. And now my only recourse is to go back to the city and say, "You know what? He can't sell a building until that's fixed." That's my issue with the whole thing. And it all falls back onto the city.
And, well, and, and what we've put in place are trigger points. That's what we're talking about here, is a trigger point.
Well, if, but if we change it, then that takes that away.
That's, that's right, and then you don't have a trigger point, then you say, "If not now, when?"
And then when you do.
And I'm not trying to justify one position or other, those are the decisions that city council has to make, but those are, those are the, the tools, the mechanisms that we, we as cities throughout the whole state, it's not just Payson, but throughout the whole state. We're in a, a growth mode, and if you will, in the awkward teenage years, to where that we are experiencing these things before we have a lot of rooftops, before the, the economy supports the putting of this type of money into a piece of property.
But if we don't take care of it now, it's gonna get worse, correct?
And so we struggle with it, but, um, like, we, we do need to have those trigger points where and at what point in time, that's what we're struggling with. Not struggling, but that's what we're recommending, you know, a twenty percent or whatever percentage that the city council feels that is a, a reasonable, um, buffer, if you will, um, from not everything that, that gets improved will trigger, but a substantial amount will. But those trigger points are definitely important for, for the city, but in the same vein, just like the mayor's been suggesting, there's a lot of people in the mayor's same situation where that their neighbors, that, you know, and they're wondering why, why they have to live with that. And we see it when we have those big storms. And as we grow, we try to, uh, keep these mechanisms, mechanisms in place so that we can develop those systems, those utility systems that flow the water and, you know, appropriate.
I mean, I can see not having to put in asphalt. I mean, yeah, not a break the guy, have to put in asphalt. I can see it all the way there. Curb and gutter, I, I'm good with that. I mean, as we grow, I see we need to put in the curb and gutter, and that's just all part of being invisible and doing it. I'm good with that. But when you're starting affecting neighbors and stuff like that, and now the city's just gonna say, "Whatever, you know, deal with it yourself. If you don't like it, go get a lawyer." And that's what it would take me, when it should have been done right the first time.
And we're still in a public hearing, so I'm gonna turn over to you.
All right, uh, my name's Craig Johnson, and I'm one of those damn attorneys. I'm the owner of Mount Evil Law.
Well, you got my opinion on it anyway.
Welcome to Payson, right? So I just wanna give you a little background on, um, the building here. So we purchased the building in, uh, two thousand and fourteen. Um, as Jill mentioned, there was some issues with the parking, um, that was brought to my attention by a very local neighbor here. And, um, citing some alleged safety issues, um, really, you know, in my opinion, discussing this with the planning, uh, commission, those are the reasons he brought forward. Um, when I purchased the building, I was anticipating being able to use, you know, every parking stall there. Um, obviously the impact that having to conform immediately with, with this ordinance would have to essentially take away three-quarters of my parking and require me to, uh, put in curb and gutter in addition to, uh, asphalt and other improvements. Um, obviously, I am a new business owner in Payson, I've been here approximately three years, a branding building. I can see both sides of this coin, I can see the need for the city to have improvements and to have a, a curb and gutter. I see that as benefiting both parties, not only the city, but also the business owner. Uh, I think that's a two-way street. But I think the issue that I have is some of the, the notice requirements. I, I prepared a, a business license, no problem. I was never informed of any non-conformity issues at that time. Um, I was never informed of any, um, problems with my building. Obviously, I haven't made any improvements. Uh, I've made some improvements on the exterior, but no, nothing major. Um, and so my, my issue would be more with the reasonableness of the, uh, city requiring, uh, myself and other business owners to make improvements as far as what kind of time allowances. I mean, uh, like I said before, I think it's reasonable to request that a business owner participate. The thing I have a hard time with is, is if I come in as a new business owner, or even an existing business owner, and I'm mandated, um, by the city to immediately undertake some kind of improvements, um, I mean, I don't have, uh, the resources to immediately engage in those types of, of activities. What I would request is that there be some kind of, um, allowances made, uh, for the business owner to, um, you know, to make those improvements and to have the city work in tandem with the business owner. Um, as far as the applicability of the ordinance as proposed, I think there's some ambiguity in the language as far as subsection three, that talks about any change of use or intensity of an existing use on the site. I think that's open to some interpretation, and I, I would be curious to see how the city would interpret that or apply that. Um.
So do we need to rewrite that?
You know, and I don't, I don't raise that necessarily, you know, point fingers, I just think that that, that's a potential, uh, place that could be open to the, the varying interpretations. I mean, intensity of, of an existing use, I think that could be, like, varies seasonally. I think that could be higher in the summertime and lower in the wintertime for a lot of businesses. Um, I just don't know how the city would apply that, you know, without having some ambiguity there. Um, and so I guess I just wanna be, you know, I might, a voice of reason. I, I understand both sides of the coin. Um, I would just ask for some reasonableness on both sides that, you know, if, if business owners are asked or requested to, to make improvements, I would request that, uh, there be some, um, reasonableness there with as far as time constraints as well as financial, uh, considerations for a, a business owner such as myself to undertake a project like that, to, to come into conformity. Um, but, um, and as far as, uh, some of the points that were brought up earlier, um. But, um, and as far as, uh, some of the points that were brought up earlier, um, you know, if there is a mandate for the city to, um, engage to undertake these improvements, uh, you know, I do think that there could be some, um, potential, um, you know, ambiguity there as far as which businesses do you decide, which fingers, which businesses do you point out and say, you guys need to be conforming? Um, I, I see some legal problems there as far as, you know, potential legal issues with the business owners, uh, being singled out for obvious reasons, I think. Um, I think that's open to some, uh, some issues as well. Um, but I appreciate the time and, um, I thank the council for, you know, the opportunity to discuss this.
Jill, can you know why, um, why when, when he purchased the property that, that he didn't know about that? Wasn't that long ago? What, did you say three years ago? Oh, he was in, he was in another location in Pason.
It's only been by year.
And then, so he was out by the hospital. And then relocated to the site.
But still you're saying he didn't know that when he bought it, he didn't know that...
Well, and I think we run into that with, I mean, with every other applicant also. They come in to get a building permit or a business license and these things are triggered.
I just have one question. Who, who authorized that parking in the very first place when it was in order, happily?
That goes back a long way before my time.
I mean, who, who allowed the striping of that in the very first place?
I, it's been there since before I was here.
I mean, you can't even go in on a night yet there, can you?
But it's, the problem is, is they're parking in the wrong. It's Pason city property, that's what it is. A parking lot on a road is what it is.
Or parking on the sidewalk.
Is there any way to take out that, that law on the side? And, and just talking with Mr. Johnson earlier today about this, this particular site, you know, if the city were prepared to move forward, I mean, regardless of the laws, if we were prepared to move forward with curb and gutter, he does realize that that parking would need to be moved. Um, you know, and he has some ideas of how that can be addressed. It's just starting a new business in this location, not realizing that that would be triggered at this time.
I mean, right, exactly.
Is, is the impact. And so I'm saying is, is why didn't, why didn't we know that before he bought us?
Because we had to fight them. Yeah, but, but there you go again. That was an existing residential, residential commercial. This, this is...
But that had been commercial for quite a while.
It's owned commercial, but it was still being occupied as a home.
Yeah, it was a non-conformity use.
Right. It was, it was an office there.
No, no, that was a house.
They lived in it.
And they lived in it, okay.
Yeah.
So I mean, all the, all the discussion and the issues you brought up are the same ones that staff has struggled with. It's just that's been the regulation, so that's what we've applied. But there's just been a lot of, um, questions, um, surrounding these regulations recently that we thought we probably need to have this discussion and, and consider some amendments.
Do we have anybody else who would like to, we're still in the public hearing. Is there anybody else who would like to come up?
Um, couple of things. I, I think that triggering a, if somebody is renting a building and then somebody else comes in and rents the same building, um, as far as I know, when a new renter comes in, that's a trigger point, right? Right now?
Yes.
And if it's the same use and the same is being rented and they aren't doing any remodeling or anything like that, I think that's one thing we might want to consider is not having that be a trigger point because there's really no change to the property or anything. One, another thing is going back to the merit, merit problem with this property. Maybe a trigger point could be if somebody's selling the building or, or even renting it. If, if there's a known problem already documented, that could be a trigger point.
We got both of them in the exact, the exact scenario. You have Carter Glass and Mount Lebo Law and the exact thing right there.
Well, they aren't, there isn't a...
They're both being sold.
Right. Well, what I'm talking about is, is a trigger point for, I'm not, I didn't even say anything about being, being things sold right now. I talked about renting, it's already been rented. I talked about trigger point for a problem that we already, that we see exists. With, uh, Carter's Glass, where there's no existing problem, it's documented. With the mayor's next door neighbor, there's existing problems documented. So if there's a problem that's documented, that might be a trigger point versus if a city out there not causing enough problems, that might not be a, a trigger point, so...
So then you're saying like the lawyer's office would be documented?
Well, documented.
Because I know there were amendments even when, I understand why for a long time. Has he went to the state too?
Yeah.
Right. Because we haven't done much.
I've never gotten any notice.
But is it documented for, there's wrecks or...
I don't know, especially at all.
I mean, just somebody said something, it doesn't mean it's documented.
People complain all the time, but I think the difference is, is that, you know, this needs to be something that's, that's said, hey, you're out of conformity.
Well, if that was parallel parking, it wouldn't be an issue. It's just that you have, the way it's situated.
Well, that's my opinion though. I mean, for you to say that, that's obviously, you know, if there's a parking stall there that's striped and I'm driving in there and I'm not from Pason and I don't know any better, how am I supposed to know that's out of conformity? I mean, as a business owner, I mean, you buy a parcel of property, uh, typically there's seller disclosures and things like that. You do details. It's well, if I'm issued a business license for a municipal...
Well, I agree with you.
Then I should be able to use that business as my business, as a business owner. And if I need to make improvements, then I should be notified as such.
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm not blaming you, but our system has failed on this issue right here.
Absolutely. No, I appreciate it.
So there are just a couple of things I, ideas I have, so, thank you.
Okay, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, we got a motion to close public hearing?
I'll second it.
We got a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay, do we have any other discussion or...
I'd like to make a motion that we turn this into a work session and table it and take the field trip to these specific locations and a couple others and then over to Spanish to see what some of, what they've done over there on a couple of businesses that I have in mind in, in the next week or so, so that we can have, be, be prepared to resolve this at the next calendar year.
Okay, we got a motion.
I'll second.
We got a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah. Aye.
I'd like to make a comment too.
We, we, we have to have standards. We can't, we can't go without standards or we don't, we don't ever improve ourselves. But there's got to be a way that we can, with standards in place, that we can address unique situations without being in violation of the law or whatever. We've got to find a way to, to address unique situations.
Well, I think on Carter's, I mean, like the parking lot, it's, that's our, it's can't be going by...
Why don't we, why don't we, like, do you know what, like up to, uh, the spring place? I mean, we did require them, they have an outdoor storage area that's gravelled and not all asphalt, but how do we, I mean, there's got to be some, some...
Is that because it's storage, not parking?
Yeah.
Right.
But I mean, it solves some of the storm drain water issue anyways, because apparently I thought the EPA was leaning more towards not having, uh, curb gutter and wanted it going back into the ground.
Yeah. And they want more of a...
Inter...
Like swales and some stuff. And the hard part with that is then it puts a huge burden on our storm drain department because our homeowner's going to maintain those swales and all the stuff that, there's different, you know, methods to do it, but they get, it can get pretty expensive for us too. So I don't know, we're going to have to start looking at that probably, but it is, it is an expensive...
But I think like what we did with Gordon's tires, where we made them, we'll dig that out in the very front and fill that with the, the rock and everything where the water will go and seep down. I think, I mean, we come up with some reasonable answers instead of just looking at a guy and saying, you have to pay 50,000 bucks to come in and pave the whole stinking, I don't know, I have a... I can see if it was in the middle of the main street, but good heck, he's out there, nobody else is out there yet. I mean...
And where the ability is in the ordinance for staff to do that, we've done that.
Right, right.
But there's other times that there's just, it's black and white and there's no way to, to get around that without some modifications.
Well, I think, like I say, curb and gutter I'm good with. I mean, if you have to put that in, you have to put that in. As far as the other, I think that we, we just need to look at them and say, whatever. But I think meeting and hashing it out and doing a work session on it would be...
Hash it, just come up with, be creative and let's come up with something like this.
Let's work it through.
I want them, I want them, I want them both here. I want them both, the, the seller building, I want the other one to be here as an attorney. I don't have a problem, but we just have some issues that we need to work out.
I just see it, it's, it's way far on this side, way far on this side. We just need to bring them in and work some of these through.
It might be more than, it might be even more than a, just one, I mean, might need a full work session where we just, like a fifth week work session, you know? If there's no curb, then we can get everybody, like, Brian had a good idea, you know?
Well, I just don't want it to drag along. I don't, I don't...
Well, I understand that, but I don't know that, I mean, I'm, I'm saying months and months, I'm saying this is true.
Yeah, can I make some comments? Um, first thing is, our planning commission already looked at this, it is one thing that they approved, so I think we need to rely on someone on their judgment. So one of the, Jill, do we have a planning commission meeting that we...
No, we do not. It's scheduled for Thanksgiving.
Um, I would also like to hear from the planning commission again, because I know we had a long discussion, I was there the night we talked about this, and we had a long discussion about what would be things we could do. I think the other thing is, we do have other cities in the south of the county who have a more flexible ordinance. We've got to find a way to be more flexible.
But there is a way, then we can add to the utility bill. There's, there's all kinds of ways.
Obviously, but there are other situations where that may not be the answer. And we need to look at some way to make our, our ordinance more flexible.
You know, Councilwoman Carter, her future Councilwoman Carter wants curb and gutter. The only way, SIDs will fail. The only way you're going to be able to do this is convince the people and the city's going to have to give the final answer, just like the bond on the wa, on the water tank.
But change doesn't happen overnight. No, it doesn't. And as long as...
Okay. Kim, to the floor here. Hold on.
Go ahead, Kim. The motions we've made have already put this into a work session. Most of this, this work can be taken care of at that time. The thing that I haven't heard mentioned tonight, excuse me, the thing that I haven't heard mentioned tonight is that the results that we're trying to reach are mutually beneficial. I think there's got to be a way that we can find that the city can share with the landowner the impact of this ordinance because it helps us both. So I would like to suggest that that's one of the things that we consider when we come back to our, our work session.
Chief, we have a full force there when we have this work session.
So to bring in more than once you got there behind again.
Bring the dog.
All right, yeah, bring the dog, put the titanium key in him. Okay. Okay. What we got here tonight is hanging, got it? All right, uh, next item on the agenda.
Oh, I think we both, did we go?
Yeah, we both did. We both.
Yes, it's on a work session.
So, so what's the schedule on the work session? I'm getting the ideas. January 3rd.
And will you make sure that all, all of those people involved...
I'd like to can't, can't, can't say that, but... And the planning commission. And I would like to do a planning commission.
Well, when is our...
Thank you for your time.
We're sharing.
We got a green glass.
We're sharing. Um, that's why you're looking so snazzy.
Just that, yeah.
How much time do you think it would take?
We don't want to do a quick one. I mean, this is one of the...
Oh, you mean the work session? Well, I think you have to come up with some ideas or people forgot to log the log.
We're going to have a couple hours.
I think we need to make a table of some situations, so...
And, I mean, we can schedule it and the entire council could be invited and we can post it that way, or there's only a few that can make it to the site business.
Post it for the planning zoning also.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and anybody, I mean, anybody, obviously it would be open. Um, and we can just throw out, we will just send an email out, show up states, we try to resolve it. We have to email the ZEBR to...
I would be fine with that. Next Thursday?
Yeah, I think next Thursday. We have a lot of work.
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
On the day after.
Thank you.
On Friday.
All right, next Thursday then.
That's on the next day.
Okay, and we ready to move on?
Yeah, we'll, we'll just send an email out.
Okay. Uh, next thing is on the, uh, subdivision ordinance. Do we have a...
Sorry, yeah, we moved on. Yeah, the subdivision ordinance...
Do we have, hold on, do we have a motion to go back into public hearing?
Still move.
Second?
Second.
We got a motion, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay, we're now in the public hearing on the subdivision ordinance.
Subdivision ordinance, it could be tabled as well. I mean, bring it down, it is not time pressing. And so if you want to address that at the, at, not necessarily at the work session, but when you make a final decision on ordinance amendments, we can do that. Or if you feel comfortable with the changes. Staff is suggesting that, um, in the event that a development is adjacent to limited access roads, so collector's status streets or arterial status streets, that to be able to give them some little, additional flexibility on the number of units that can be, um, allowed on a single point of ingress and egress, um, benefits the city by reducing the number of access points, um, or intersections. And so we're looking at it as, as mutually beneficial, um, to increase it to 15 units.
Okay, is that it?
Public hearing.
This is a public hearing? And do we have anybody that would like to come forward? Senior, do we have a motion to close public hearing?
I'm in a second.
We got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay, do we have a discussion, Mike?
I do have a question. That, this type of, uh, change varies all the way down the valley, doesn't it? Like...
Well, yeah, we're on the low end. Does this have type of view, does this type of view request?
So varies anywhere from 10 to 15. And so it is all over the board throughout the county.
Staff on the low end. Yeah.
And we are on the low end, but, but there's, there's a lot of other communities too that have that 10 or 15.
But staff are dealing as far, uh, not only your department, but fire and everybody else, they go go with this change.
DRC, so...
Any other discussion? Jim?
You always have a profound discussion. Don't give me that look.
Okay, so do we need a motion on this or do we want to...
No, I'm sorry to that.
Oh, no, we have, we, we're not, oh, we, so we need a motion to either table it in a work session or a motion?
I don't have a problem with this one.
All right. So do we want to, anybody want to make a comment?
Motion to approve the increase from 10 to 15 on the ingress egress.
Okay.
Or get a title, is it title point?
Title point. I'm sorry.
John Bryson, mayor, sign.
Okay, we got a motion and we've got a second. Does this need a roll call?
Yep.
Larry?
Aye.
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 I'm going to say name on this one.
Aye.
You didn't have any discussion though. You can't just, you can't be the only mayor and not, and not have a discussion, that's why you named.
But he's, he's named, but it was, it was unanimous, so...
Hell, tell me, hell, tell me.
Anyway.
What, what information do I have? They recommend it.
Okay. Next thing on the agenda is the presentation of the, on the responsibilities of the Development Services Department.
Hopefully this will answer more questions than it makes you guys have, but this will go along, obviously, a little bit of what we just talked about, but, I don't know, I thought about this for a couple of months and tried to kind of think, just to give a brief overview of what goes on over there. I think most of you probably know, but just to kind of go through it a little bit, so, um, this is a picture of what people see when they come to our counter. We don't have a secretary, as you guys know, so we don't have anyone really answering the phone unless Jill or Kyle or some, one of us can, right there, but that's what we greet people as in our department for the most part, and I'm sure people think no one works[1784.94] That's what we greet people as in our department for the most part. And I'm sure people think no one works there, but. Uh, that's not filled because when Amanda left, obviously we, we chose to hire John Lundell at the time and then he did a great job for us. And now Kyle Dean's in there, so. Just kind of wanted to show that obviously that, this person obviously would answer the phone and direct people, you know, get the right person that they're trying to get with. Greet people. They receive applications at the counter or get the right person that needs to. When we had a secretary, they also process the fence and sign permits, um, file prod, you know, projects as they come in and, and building permits and then. They take planning commission minutes if we have that person. So like I said, this is just kind of what it looks like with nobody there. And I know we have a bad reputation throughout the community and the development community especially that we get accused of being hard to deal with like we've talked about tonight. And just not having anyone there, I think doesn't help that. So if we had a person eventually that was there that was friendly and, and helpful, I think that would somewhat help. I wouldn't say it would fix it all, but it would help because I know people yell at us because no one's answering the phone or no one's there and they have to ring the bell and they'll ring it ten times till we come up there, but. Um, right now, that's a picture of Walt Disney, so he doesn't obviously work here, but, um, he did a great job of planning his parks and that, but that's why I put it on there, but. Uh, we currently have a planning and zoning specialist job, which is Kyle Dean's. He did work here before. But he was part of the group that got laid off with the recession and that that came through, so. Um, he just started in October. And, um, right now he's doing a lot of the secretarial jobs just like John did, plus trying to do all of his regular duties. So he's answering the phone, going to the counter a lot, which obviously keeps him from. Doing some of what he would do if he didn't have to do all that, but. Um, he does, he deals with all the zoning that comes in. So any question on what's allowed and what can I do on my property, what are my setbacks, all that kind of stuff, he answers. He processes the signed fence permits. Uh, he helps review any, uh, site plans that come in and. He's obviously, he works for Jill, so he does whatever she assigns him. And then. Uh, he's, actually one of his tasks that he's working on, which will take a little bit of time, but we've talked about comparing our ordinances to other cities to see if we're less restricted, more restrictive, what we are. He is in the process of doing that. It's going to be a little slow and painful because there's, I mean, if you guys have looked at our ordinances, some of them are over two hundred and fifty pages. So it is a time consuming process, but he is working on that. He's making notes as he's getting into stuff so that hopefully in the near future, we'll be able to bring you guys an updated ordinance. Ordinances that will address a lot of these things we've talked about and be more in line or at least closer to if we're way out of whack, you know, if we're not, then it probably won't change much, but.
Well, we've done some as we've gone too. I mean, you know, as we, like, like this one that we talked about tonight, as we did something, you know, and of course we worked forever on that A1 holding zone. I mean, that whole thing.
Yeah, we've tackled some, but we're just trying to look at them all and get them right, you know, up to date and refreshed too. And, and then he's also kind of doing something that John had started, but looking at the accessory apartment. And kind of trying to deal with how do we deal with a lot of these that are technically, you know, not proved to have an accessory apartment or another living unit in them. And not a duplex, it's a house that somebody's converted to basement or something. So we're trying to figure out the best way to tackle those, so. Um, as you guys all know, Jill's the city planner. You've all seen the staff report example that she submits with a lot of stuff because. You know, obviously seventy-five to eighty percent of what you guys see is directed through our department. I mean, to be honest, we, we deal with the majority of what comes before you. So Jill does all the reports and then, um, obviously, as you know, she does all the presentations at both planning commission and city council law. She reviews plans and answers a lot of questions that developers have and people that come in on what they can do and what they're required to do. Um, she, obviously she deals with all the planning issues and what that is. She helps write the ordinances and oversees those. She also helps do some of the secretarial work where we don't have one and she actually tracks all the building permit stuff for reports that we're required to do with the state and that. Um, if she had a little more time, we'd dig into more of the long range planning and some of that stuff that would, like the master planning that we're doing in South Meadows and some of that kind of stuff. We, we would dive into that a little more, but we just haven't had time to keep up with that. Uh, we just actually hired David Lund. He's our city surveyor that replaced Aaron after he left. And, um, so he does all the boundary line descriptions, any plats that we need, like the, the property we just sold the last council meeting. That, that kind of stuff, David would prepare all that and get us through that. Um, obviously he's going to survey all our projects that we do internally as a city. Like smaller curb and gutter projects that residents come in and do. Typically, we go out and survey them, design them. Then we go out and stake them and then the resident pays for the actual installation and cost of that curb and gutter. So prepares legal descriptions. Dave, as the city manager, has a lot of those that we, we have to deal with and so he does that. And then he'll, he's actually working on trying to track all our section quarters, which is kind of what that picture would describe even though it's not here, but. Just so that when we do have projects, it's easy to, we know where all those are and we'll have a reference map. Right now, he's kind of, one of the things he's working on is the, the expansion for the cemetery, working on the new plots and the roadway out there. So the GIS administrator used to be along with that position, which we quickly found out that surveyors and GIS does not go together and couldn't find anyone that could do both. So currently we don't have anyone doing our GIS, which is a very big negative for us because it not only hurts us internally, but. All our current staff, that's how we find things out in the field, water valves for leaks, we, and we don't have that information. They have a hard time doing that. Um, the, the GIS administrator used to prepare all our maps, so all our zoning maps, our general plan maps, uh, everything, the annexations, all that stuff used to be done by Aaron. So currently we don't have any way to prepare those or, or get those, so we, we, uh, aren't doing that obviously, so. Like I said, he updates our GIS both on, on the website that, that people can access and then what we use internally. And then they, they use shape files is what they're called. And we actually, Dave and I, and then we've met with the company that does our website. They actually have a guy that also does GIS. We've been talking with them, got some prices from them that we're going to look at and probably. See if that's a possibility to help get everything up to speed because we, we're probably about a year and a half to two years behind on our GIS. Because Aaron, with working for both cities, did not have time to keep up on those, so hopefully we'll be able to address that, but. But like I said, that's just examples of some of the maps, our street master plan and zoning maps and stuff that a lot of people reference. Brent's the assistant city engineer and the water superintendent. He's been here about eight years. He supervises obviously all the stuff that the water department does. Uh, he's responsible for helping do engineering designs. Reviews, plans and that one as they come in also for both the water and on the engineering side. He's also the desp, the direct responsible person in charge for both our water and sewer. He's also the dam tender. So once a year, the state comes and inspects all of our lakes and, and the dams to make sure that they're in compliance with their requirements. Puts out projects when we have projects or RFPs for work and then he applies for the water grant that we just received for the PI meters. And then whatever else I give him to do, but, um, it would be nice to have a full-time engineer, but I understand that just, you know, it's hard to get everything. I put all my titles, not to be a smart mouth or be a thing, but that's all the stuff that I do. So I put it in a different color just so they didn't know this again.
Get him on list. I'm going to see sound on Saturday. I'll take you with a party list for Brian.
But I have been here a little over two years. I do scott above this part, but, um, so obviously I supervise all the public works, engineering, planning, building inspector. I deal with a lot of citizen complaints and issues that you guys also get and I get the fun part of that too. Um, but I knew all this coming in, so I'm not complaining.
And we do it for free.
Pretty much. Yeah, I do get paid for it, so.
Not pretty much. We do it for free.
Um, you know, review development plans, help do what design we can, sign plats, make the final decision on all that stuff and then. I just, one day I was kind of curious myself what I'm, I mean, I'm over sixty-seven percent of our budget, just between all the departments I'm over, so.
I guess we better cut.
That's what I was. I'd be happy if you stripped one of those titles and we learned with. Um, and then like stuff like, I'm the one that does all the addresses and they've added annexation, the road, what the road names changed to from the county.
So we lost Tom and gained you.
Yes. Hey, this is the first time I've done this in two years.
Go back to five H and you get a little more work done.
No. Um, this, this one, I just kind of want to throw up because we've been looking to at a tracking software. Right now we have no software in development services to do, to track anything, so. It's all in Jill's head, which I'm not criticizing Jill by any reply to that comment, but, you know, she's the one that's been here longer than anyone else and, and if she forgets about it or we don't know about it or it was ten years ago. We have nothing that pulls up an issue with a property when somebody does come in and do it. And that's part of why I think things are getting missed is we don't have a way to. To put a thing, you know, put a system together that says, hey, this property's got this development agreement or this issue with it or, you know, we don't, we just don't. And then with some of the turnover we've had, that's part of the reason I think some of these, these businesses are getting done because, as you know, Trista does business licensing and she's over on this side. And we try to look at them too, but, you know, we've had some turnover and people, I don't think that we're aware that every business license required all these improvements if it needed to be done. So I'm, I'm not making an excuse, but I think that's just why some things have been missed, but we have looked at a software from iWorks. It's about three thou, a little over three thousand dollars to get started and then it's about twenty-three hundred a year after that. We've looked at some similar ones with Cassell and, and a different company and Cassell was about six or seven thousand dollars a year and then this other one was about thirty thousand, so. Price wise, this one is pretty good, but.
Is it adequate?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's probably not a hundred percent right, but it would do a lot. It would help us track not only development projects as they come in, like we could set it up so that. Notifications would go to the fire chief, the police chief, and they would have to review those and sign off that they have.
Is it a physical vehicle maintenance one?
Hopefully a lot better than that one, but.
I'm hoping.
But, I mean, this is just stuff, I, I didn't want to, like I said, bore you guys, but this is just one thing I wanted to quickly show too that goes along with. Our, our website that we are in the process of updating. But this is some stuff they quickly created for us without even a contractor. We don't have an agreement with them, but this would be, this would be like the public web, website that people would access with the GIS stuff. What this does is it allows you to pick like an address. So if I just click on one of these. So what you can do is on that right side, it said three hundred feet, so you can hit generate list. And it's hard to see it in this scale, but it created a little red circle around there. So it'll now, it'll generate. A list of everyone within three hundred feet of that property that you chose. So it'll give their name and address and everything. And it'll kind of bring that in so that, um, you know, for like, if we have notifications or we have an area we have to notify or something, but that allows us a quick. Based off the, the county parcel maps, it'll bring up their address, their name and all that, so. We could have this available to residents or we could just use it internally, whichever we wanted and then. I don't know how many of you have ever gone to our online maps, but this is one that we had them create with some of our layers. So this is stuff that we could use internally and on the, and on the public that'll show, we can add our utilities, it'll show roads, zoning, everything so that. And if we keep this up to speed, it's going to be accurate that everyone, when we send them to their engineers or developers, everything's updated, so. That's just some things we're looking at and trying to help improve our customer service and our flexibility with helping those so that we don't have that bad reputation, so. That was more why I presented, but.
Travis, would it take another employee to front end load this?
Um, if we tried to do this internally, we would have to have a full-time employee that did just GIS. Like kind of what Aaron did and they'd have to keep up on that. And right now, we currently go through Spanish Fork server is how Aaron, we had an agree, we have an agreement with them. That's how we host it. With this company, it would all be web-based and they would, they would host it and, you know, one, it'd be a little expensive to start to get us up to speed, but once we did. It would be a minimal, not that much of a cost to keep our stuff up to date every month and then.
But the information itself would have to be entered in some way.
Yeah, we would send them our survey files, like on the, on the utility side.
All right.
And then they would, they would take that data, bring it in, update the shape files and then all this information would be updated. And then we could also. Take those updated shape files for those of us that have the Art View software and update that on our system here too.
Okay, that, that answers.
So it, it does a lot for us that we're not keeping up on right now, so. It's just stuff like that that I just kind of wanted to show you guys that. It's not to come in and beg for more money that we don't have right now, but just a need that eventually we need to start trying to address, so. I, I won't do this every council meeting like you accuse me of doing.
At least you waited six months instead of the day after the new budget.
I don't think you hurt your slam on it.
Okay, next thing is discussion regarding partnering with Mountain View Hospital and the wellness program. Is that Dave?
Yeah. Mayor Council, we've been discussing in our wellness committee, things we can do to get our employees to live healthier. Mountain View Hospital did approach us and they're rolling out a wellness program they wanted. We would be interested in, in partnering with them. They call it the H2U Works. It's true, uh, they're a parent company. Basically what, what it would do is there's access to all sorts of information. They do provide a full blood draw. I know right now with Health of Utah, we've become and they, they do an assessment of us here once a year, provides some incentives. This is more of a full blood draw and they, they get more detail of what, how your health is. We felt like we could do some partnering with them as far as having some competitions on, by the Biggest Loser or other types of activities we could do with the hospital and, and us. We met with them a couple of times and been in contact with them, but, um, basically what this is, is there would be a. There would be a charge of fifteen dollars per employee per year, which is a little less than, a little more than a dollar a month. But that would open up the ability for us to be part of their program and partner with them. Uh, originally when they presented to us, uh. I think it was closer to thirty dollars a month and, and as we talked to it, they lowered that down and. They only charged the employees that participate in the program, so if we had every one of our full-time employees, it'd cost us fifteen hundred dollars for the year. Uh, I don't think we're going to have all of those. We need at least twenty-five employees to, to be eligible for the full blood draw and, and full health assessment. If, if a spouse or somebody wants to participate, they would have to pay their own assessment, but we felt like it was a, a good thing. It's, I think it's worth the money that, for what they provide. So just wanted to put that out to the council. We, uh, at least the wellness committee felt like it was a worthwhile proposition to try. And, uh, see if we get participation and, and help our, our employees to be more health conscious, so.
Okay, we have a.
So I'm just.
The employee's gonna pay?
What's that?
What's the employee's gonna pay?
Well, what it is, the, the cost for this is it's fifteen dollars a year for the, for, per employee. And we're, we're looking at, in each of the individual budgets, see if we can come up with that depending on who comes with us. We're not asking a budget amendment. We're just going to try to find it within what we have. I know when we had this discussion a few months back about the exercise time or work time, they were thrown out, why don't we do a gym pass for them or others? It felt like this was a fairly cheap alternative that we would try to, to cover as far as the city could cover the expense depending on how many people, um, sign up for it. And we would try to absorb that within the department budget. So we're not asking for more money or a budget amendment. We're just, mostly it's information, but, uh. I guess I'd just like a motion of the council supporting us doing that with the Mountain View Hospital. We'd contact them and start following.
Do we get any benefits through our medical insurance for having this?
This one's not part of our medical insurance, um, but it's part of their hospital association and. Thought we'd give it a try some. We do have P E H P and so there is the health assessment we get every year.
I mean, so what goes along with this? I mean, how are you going to enact this whole thing? How is it all going to play out?
Well, it, it, it's a website, web-based. We would, each employee that wants to participate, we would give that, they would get a, a password and, uh. Uh, access to the portal. Then there's interactive things and then working with the hospital, hopefully to maybe have some competitions or some things to work with their staff. Then there's interactive things and then working with the hospital, hopefully to maybe have some competitions or some things to work with their staff.
You know, I guess like my question is, um, what are we gonna offer versus that? Enabling you to offer employees incentives or rewards, I mean, what's, how does this?
Well, as a, as a committee, we're talking about what we can do to, you know, if we, like Biggest Loser, we, in the past, we've offered the winner of that maybe get. We still maybe look at some.
Online and a donut, maybe we see it more donuts to donate. A dozen donuts to the biggest loser.
What do you think?
So with, with our insurance, we have an evaluation assessment every year and if we, uh, if we reduce our incidences or our usage, that, they consider that with, uh. Obviously, we're never gonna get a reduction of rates, but they may not increase it quite as much. We get a benefit that way, don't we? If we, if we're healthier and we don't use them as much, we, that's considered.
With our, with our insurance company?
Yes.
Yeah, and through, through P H P and Health of Utah, they do, do it in the assessment, they'll give you a fifty dollar rebate, you know, that'll give you some incentives like that.
So a healthier workforce in the long run would reduce your insurance costs.
It, it could, yes.
So they will reduce potentially with this?
This one right here is not tied to our insurance company, so.
But they. Well, it's not tied to it, but if you're, if you have less incidences with your insurance.
Oh, yeah.
Then it's tied to it that way.
Oh, yeah, if we, if, if we have all the employees participating in this and we become healthier and more people participate, yeah, that could definitely affect our premiums.
Yeah. Could affect your workers' comp too.
It could, it, it definitely could affect our workers' comp when that's one of the issues we've had in the, the past few years, so.
Okay, do we have any other discussion?
I think it's very good, Dan. Go for it, yeah. Do you need a motion?
If you could just a motion to support this, I would make the motion of supporting this effort, working on the hospital and the program and buying the money that they give. Okay.
I have a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Okay, motion carries. Uh, next thing is the discussion regarding the Tour of Utah.
Okay, so at the last city council meeting, Jen Andrews was here and presented some information to you. There was a good discussion about whether or not we wanted to be a whole city again for the Tour of Utah. Since that time, there's been, um, a healthy discussion, um, you know, through email between you and staff, uh, to, to look at the pros and cons of doing that and what benefits it provides the city. You know, maybe some, um, cons of moving forward in that direction. Some of the latest discussion among the council members was, um, the financial participation and whether or not we can keep those, all of those costs in the city. Or whether or not we're gonna have to expend, uh, city money outside of our boundaries. Um, we did recently get a confirmation from the Tour of Utah staff that, well, based on feedback that we received from Susan Johnson with, um, Quality Inn. She's willing to give us sixty rooms for the night, um, that's needed. And so we shared that information with the Tour of Utah and they said, if the city is willing to, to cover those sixty rooms, we will not require you to spend any money outside of your community that the Tour of Utah would cover those costs.
Jill, I have a question about this, um, I have no problem with that, I mean, I think that's great, I think it's a great, a great thing to come into town and it's lots of fun and, you know, and you go into that little thing and they teach you lobster and stuff, so that's good.
Just the VIP people.
Hey, yeah, well, I won't be a VIP, but somebody will get thrown in and do lobster, yeah. But my, I guess one concern I just have, I just wanna make sure because, um, it is a lot of work for staff to get prepared for this. Is that, and we, and Travis just told us, you know, just showed us how, you know, there's, he needs about twenty-seven point eight hours in a day and he only gets twenty-four. So, um, is that gonna be okay? I mean, is it, is it, do you have a committee that can do it? What, you know what I'm saying, I mean, what about, not just, not just cost in dollars, but resource, resources for the city?
Well, I think a couple.
What's, what's true cost, are we gonna be involving overtime, I guess is the question?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's more, there's more than just the, uh.
Oh, yeah, there's a lot more than.
The fee, the more paid.
The answer to that is yes, definitely, it's not budgeted, we don't have it in the budget currently for Tour of Utah, so it does affect our departments.
Right, and I think that's where it comes back to involving all departments, which we discussed at the last meeting and not putting all of that responsibility on the Parks Department where they will be working on another celebration that week. And, um, most of everything that happens, um, leading up to and even that day, happens within working hours. And so we did have a lot of the other different departments in the city that was helping that day and that's what I've requested again, if this is something the council would like to do. I've requested that of other staff members of it's gonna take different departments helping because we can't expect that the Parks Department, um, take on that full responsibility, especially where it's two days before the salmon supper. And so, um, I, and to answer your question, um, I think it just depends on the committee that we form. I think we had a great committee in twenty thirteen, um, that jumped in and, and helped, um, in all aspects of that. But yes, there will be, uh, some response from city, um, city crews, specifically police and EMS and fire. And so, you know, there will be some impact on them as far as providing security and, you know, safety during that event, so.
I have, I, I know we, we talked about, and it's a great event, I, I have no problem with the event. And we talked about the exposure, the exposure brings to our community, both locally and nationally and internationally. And that's great, but I'm curious, of all this exposure we get, what benefit did we get out of it? Did you get one, after the last time we did this, did you get one phone call from anybody inquiring about moving their business to Payson or anything like that? I, I, I mean, what good does this exposure do us?
Well, and I know we did, but every year that we have this salmon supper and every year that we have this, that, that we have any days, do we have a business that comes in specifically for salmon suppers that go on for sixty-one years?
It's all charged with a rate, it's not taxpayer money paying for the race.
What do you mean?
The, the salmon supper, it's all sold by tickets. And you make the money, you make the money back plus on the.
I, 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 as I'm not opposed to it, I'm just curious for my own sake, what benefit did we get out of it?
Well, and, and that's really hard to define and I know that even Jen struggled with that, I mean, just.
I mean, I was very disappointed in her presentation of last year's race, the highlights she gave us. Not one whole city was even mentioned in her presentation. What kind of recognition is that? And I'm, and I'm ready to support this and I know most of the council is ready to support this, but I have concerns.
And, and that, that overview, I, I don't know in what avenues they use that information. She did send me after that meeting because there were, there was concerns, she did send me a clip and I have it here right now if you wanna see it. Um, the video that they created for Payson as a host city that was on their website, um, cause they do spotlight every host city. They create a video that people can view and then also as a community, we provide them additional information that is just available, um, in text on the website. So I do have that if you wanna see it and then it also gives a recap, um, shows the mayor giving the award to the winner. But, you know, just of what was, um, some of the footage that was provided on television. Um, you know, again, just trying to respond to the concerns that were brought up at the last meeting. You know, she wasn't able to get all of the tour tracker information, stuff for twenty thirteen, um, to us, but she did provide some information if you wanna see that. Um, you know, just trying to, you know, look at the cost, she says, you know, all of the employees that were here, the only meal that was covered that entire day for the staff was breakfast. And for lunch and for dinner, if they wanted anything before they left to the next host city, they were responsible to cover that. Now, whether or not we had employees, you know, bring a sack lunch, we don't know. But, you know, she put together some rough numbers that, hey, if you have this, a number of employees, they pay roughly ten dollars for lunch, pay this much more for dinner. I mean, that there was some, but as far as pinpointing or having something.
With the donations that have been committed and, and I'm willing to support this, I just, I just have concerns about putting the burden on our staff. That, that's my concern.
I, and I understand, I understand his concern and that, on the, at the same time, I look at this and I say, we've gotta change perceptions of the city. That we've talked about time and time again, I had two phone calls today at work and both of them were about perceptions of Payson. I think this is a positive thing. Kim?
From our past discussions, I, I think it's fairly obvious that, uh, I, I told Dave, I've been look cool on the idea. In this position, it's very difficult not to feel a growing sense of being a lame duck. And as I came into this, through the last few weeks thinking about it, I thought, as a lame duck councilman, I don't have a right to strap. The new council with this responsibility of, of the money, of the, uh, help and such. And, uh, the fact of the matter is, the discussion that we had on, online back and forth between each other. I was deeply impressed with that wellness ideas. Enough that suddenly I realized that being a lame duck works both ways. My vote can say, oh, I'm not going to burden them with the responsibility, but my vote also has the potential of disallowing an opportunity. And so, thank you for what you had to say, it impressed me to the point that when this comes to a vote right now, I'm going to vote in favor for, in favor of the opportunity rather than taking away, uh, the responsibility.
Mayor, should I say something?
Sorry.
Um, I just, uh, somebody brought money to be raised, uh, I know this isn't money in hand, it's hard to get money in hand nine months before in the event, we're going to have a package, but. So far, we have, uh, between seventy-four hundred and eighty-four hundred dollars committed to this, um, from the community. So there's been a lot of positive from the community, we have two hundred dollars from McDonald's, Utah Trix, three thousand, they did this before, they did pay the three thousand. Mountain View Hospital, two thousand dollars with, and then two hundred, eighty-one dollars for breakfast. Walmart, five hundred to a thousand dollars, Temkin, five hundred to a thousand dollars, Elmar Cadito, five hundred dollars, and Central Bank, five hundred dollars, so. And those are the ones I talked to, so.
So that total is?
Between about seventy-five hundred and eighty-five hundred dollars, so.
Hey, and I'm good with another, I think it all should be paid by donations instead of out of taxpayers' pocket.
Well, we're.
Well, I mean, just strive forward and keep going because we paid ten thousand last year, but now we're paying ten thousand plus the price of rooms, so that money's gonna go to pay for the rooms. I guess my, if you put it to a vote, I'm pretty sure every person, every rest household would pay two dollars just for a race that they won't get to see, is what it boils down to. If it's all paid for by donations, I have not a problem.
All right, you can end.
Well, I, I, I said from the start, I, you know, I'll support this, but I think in the future it needs to be figured out in the budget process and to show true cost and the true benefit. Like I said, I, I, I supported it as it was from the last contract, nothing more, I'm not in support of any money going outside this town. For any motel room and that's, that's what I stand for.
But that's what they care for.
Yeah.
And?
I was just gonna, I lost my train of thought, um, we did talk to the Tour of Utah about, uh, what Doug had mentioned about maybe entering into a, an agreement where they would bring the tour to Payson three times in the next nine years. They, they're open to that, it's kinda late right now to make the decision with this, but they said they would discuss that and talk about it. The, the advantage is for us is if that was an agreement, we could start budgeting every year, a little bit amount, carry it over and so it, it's not always a one-time thing that we gotta do. I think we made it clear that we don't wanna pay for any costs outside the city.
And I don't doubt if we was a park city and had restaurants and motels that do this in an economic boom for a two-day event, it's just the four hours that they're here, that's, I'm with Larry on, doesn't benefit us. If we were Salt Lake or Park City and they were here overnight, different story.
My only comment, Councilman Phillips, is I would recommend the council at least appropriate the ten thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah.
Because we would love to cover as much as we can with donations, but we, once we're committed to the tour, we gotta cover the costs and if, if everything falls apart, I wanna be able to cover those costs, which I believe we can, especially with the tour saying that we'll just cover those sixty rooms.
So we gotta do that in a, a budget amendment or?
We would have to bring that to a budget amendment for the council, but we kinda need the approval of the council to go forward with that, so we'd let the tour know that, that we're gonna be a whole city. And then we come together with a budget amendment, we have to host it and advertise it and bring it here for public hearing.
I would like to hear from the three that's gonna be on council, just how do you feel about it? You don't need to get up, you can just stay right there.
I'm in favor, I think we should do it, um. Like I said, you know, Councilman Phillips was talking about how we're not a park city or anything else like that, but it was very clear in the last election that we want growth. And I think that's a positive step to getting that growth and becoming, and getting those businesses so they're here. If you have events here and they're consistent, you're gonna have people who are going to start saying, you know what, there's an event here every year, we wanna build a hotel here. There's, there's, there's people coming here on a regular basis, we want restaurants and if you don't provide something and I think if you, I, I think it's a good deal, I think it's advertising, you can look at it like putting a billboard up. I, I think we should do it. Ryan, you got any? I want more.
Linda?
I am too. I think it's a good thing if we can guarantee that we get some recognition. We get something along those lines out of it. A little pushing and something about Payson City.
Well, and I like the idea of having the rooms here and.
Yeah, I have a question, what's the, the food and the drinks for the VIP tent, does it come from an outside vendor or do they buy it locally or?
Um, it was McElhies. Yeah. Well, the tour pays for it, but they, um, got all of the food through McElhies.
My shit. Is it something that Dalton could provide or is that this?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I'd support. They did send up, they did send out, out RFPs to several businesses, I mean, and I, I wanna say that they've reached out to some in Payson.
They asked us if we'd provide some names and they sent that so that we could.
Well, as long as they did that, I'm good with it.
So they gave everyone the opportunity that they chose.
Yeah, I think we sent the Clarion, maybe even Dalton, I can't remember, we'd sent it out some names of, of caterers, uh, from our area and I think they had a chance to bid on it, I think, I think it was McElhies that.
They didn't really have a problem with like liquor laws, though, I think that's where the disconnect with local was they wanted people with liquor licenses, right?
I know, I didn't.
Oh, that, you're right Tracy, that, you're exactly right. Yeah, the McElhies would have one, oh, yeah.
Yeah, McElhies.
Oh, yeah, we actually had to plug for a separate.
We, we applied for one to our state.
For the state. For a single event, yeah, we did, but I think Chase is right, there was something to do with, with the vendor and, and the liquor license.
So maybe we just need to have the legal end do it.
Yeah. Hey.
I'm good with that. Keep it down. Okay, so is there a motion, is there any other discussion?
I would move that we instruct staff to proceed, uh, with, uh, Tour of Utah telling that we're going to host the event and, um, bring to us a budget amendment here in the near future to take care of the ten thousand dollars. With the idea that we're gonna do our best to raise all of it if we can.
One second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Okay, motion carries, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yep.
Second?
Yep.
All those in favor?